The agenda is approved by consensus. We do not have any visitors or public forum that I'm aware of. And we have some presentations? No presentations. Alright, go on to report, student report.
So, this past month, a lot has happened. Most fall sports activities have completed their seasons. Boys soccer advanced to section finals for the first time in team history, but sadly, their season ended there. Girls soccer's season ended in the first round of sections against Big Lake. They played hard, but fell zero to three to the Hornets. Football made it to section finals, but did lose a close game to the Recore Spartans, bringing the Bulldog's season to an end, but they did finish as district champions. Cross country had four runners qualify for state. At the end of the race, Tyson Ricker placed fourteenth, Tanner Felton placed third sixth, Parker Spindler placed forty-sixth, Mason Becker placed one hundred and fifth. The varsity girls cross-country team also qualified for state and placed fourth in their section. The girls also traveled this past weekend to compete at the Midwest Knackey Cross Country Regional. Girls tennis had two state participants, Ava Brown and Dani Newst. Girls basketball had a Bulldog Day where varsity team members helped coach third and fourth graders in the community. GSA has been meeting every Thursday, and they are focusing on bullying as it is a very important issue, and has been working on to make sure that the numerous bullying incidents have been reported. NHS hosted a successful blood drive this past week, hoping to encourage people to do what they can to help others. And members of both student council and NHS participated in a statewide leadership conference this past weekend. This month, swim and dive had their sections this past week. They finished off their season seven to one with two new school records. Lauren Woolfield placed second in diving in their section and will advance to state this week. Fall performances of Beauty and the Beast is this Friday through Sunday. You can get your tickets online. The students are very excited to show what they have been working so hard on. Student council has organized a food drive for this week. This includes a competition between advisories to see who can bring in the most and a reward. Dance has been working hard and has their home show this Friday at 6:00 PM and a competition on Saturday in Surtell. Practice for girls basketball started with their first game only two weeks away against Princeton. The team is excited for the upcoming season and competition they will be facing. Boys basketball starts practice on November twenty-first, and they're looking forward to building off of a good year. Speech will begin practices in December, and then they will be on Thursdays in Miss Osborne's room. Gymnastics has three weeks of practice before their first meet on December second here at home, and they will have two more home meets throughout the month of December. And then, boys hockey practices began today, and wrestling starts practice next week. Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, lots still coming on.
Hockey is, we're still combined with Big Lake, yes?
Correct, yes, and they started practice today. I don't know.
Oh, there's a QR code by the auditorium too, if you don't know what the web, or can't find the website, so you can go there and get that. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent report?
Congratulations to our Teachers of the Year, LEE winners. Joan Jacobson at the primary school, Carla Johnson at the intermediate, Jason Boney at the middle school, Mariah Guiles at the high school. These staff members were recognized at a ceremony we had two weeks ago at Resource Training Solutions. Took place at the convention center in St. Cloud, and that was on Wednesday, November second. This Wednesday, two days from now, our support staff, leaders in educational excellence award winners, I'd like to congratulate them, but we have a ceremony for them on this Wednesday. Following will be recognized at this meeting on Wednesday. Lori Puckett at the primary school, Kristen Doucette at the intermediate, Jody Henninger at the middle school, Heather Gervasi at the high school, Kim Spoden out of transportation, and Linda Johnson from food service. Friday, November eleventh, each building held the Veterans Day ceremony. It was a great opportunity to hear the story for the history of Veterans Day and honor those who are serving or have served our great country. The guest speakers at the high school and middle school was Staff Sergeant Craig Vogel, and then the guest speaker at the elementaries was Robert Hague, who's an EL teacher here as well. The color guard and others were in attendance at the ceremonies, and there's a number of things on our social media as well, pictures and things like that from those, each of those ceremonies. The MSBA Leadership Conference on January twelfth and thirteenth takes place at Minneapolis Convention Center. Please let Angel on the office know if you're interested in going, so we can get everyone registered for that. I also have one flyer here, so if you can look at that, otherwise, the new members were sent a link for that, so they can see what's on the website. And I assume you guys, if you've been already registered with MSBA, have access to that through them emailing it out. But if you want to look at this, you can certainly do so.
And I think we talked about having a board dinner down there for all the new people, as well as the two of us that are departing the board, so we'll organize that on that Thursday. Or, I mean, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Thursday.
Is it Thursday night?
Yeah.
Is what we've done traditionally in the past. Down, at one of the downtown restaurants.
The MSBA Delegate Assembly takes place on December second and third at the Doubletree by Hilton. Mark has been a representative for that, so if anyone is interested in attending that, Mark can give you some details and maybe, well, as soon as I'm done here and then go from there. And then, also the facility update. You can see the weekly update on there, and that's also going on our social media every Monday. And we're putting up a little, I don't know, it's been a video, I guess, but a little thing about the transportation site, which is the part where we've had the most work done. Those become more and more abundant as we begin other projects as well.
We mentioned having an onsite groundbreaking for that. You know, having, if the transportation facility is kind of out of the way and offsite and that kind of stuff, it's not a great spot to have a groundbreaking out in the middle of a field. Can we still, I mean, is that part of the planning?
Yep, we're working on that, I'm working with ICS on that. We talked about doing the middle school. We're still waiting on the approval of the elementary renovations, but doing that middle school kind of kicked it off, and then doing something with the elementaries once we start working on those projects as well. Maybe having two groundbreaking ceremonies and then an open house or two at the conclusion of them.
So, I noticed-
Also no dates when-
Probably everybody noticed the ICS trailer that's now on campus, in the middle of campus here. So, assuming that that's where a lot of the updates and all that kind of stuff is happening.
Yeah, yep.
So, just to follow up your thing on the MSBA Leadership Conference, so I just received the Delegate Assembly information. There are twelve, I'm sorry, eighteen resolutions being considered to be brought into the MSBA legislative agenda. Some, I mean, it ranges from things like age limits on type three vehicles, I guess. The vans are getting, for a lot of districts are getting pretty old, and state law limits them to be twelve years or less. And so, I mean, one of the districts is asking for that to be extended. Fourteen years is their suggestion. I'm not sure that, I mean, as long as they're in good repair, one would think that they could do it. Anyway, there's that piece. There's some moving around of money for health and safety and capital funding, and knowing that the, like, similar to what we're running into where costs are kind of going out of control, the districts are asking for legislative help and the ability to be able to move money around, that kind of stuff. There's items on parental engagement in the agenda and outlining that parents should be involved in education. There's pieces on school board vacancies. Vacancies happen within three months of an election that you don't, you should, ought not to have to appoint somebody, but they should be able to just have the election and not have to appoint somebody in between. All of those types of things are what's in the, and you can either get it on msba.org, or I can show this to you. As Jeremy said, I am, I'm still listed as the delegate from Becker to go to the Delegate Assembly on December second and third. And unless somebody actually wants to go, I will go for Becker. If somebody does want to go, I'll relinquish that seat to whoever wants to go and experience MSBA. If you have a desire to do so, let me know. We can do that substitution.
Is that whole pamphlet's out there on the MSBA site?
Say that again?
That whole pamphlet is out there on their website?
I believe it is. There's pre-assembly meetings to go get more info. What's included in here is things like the statutory background, what current positions are from MSBA, and their recommendations. Not all of these resolutions are recommended for passage. In particular, I was looking for, looking at the one on state funding of family health, and because they don't like, they don't like state law to mandate benefits. So, there's those types of things where they're saying, no, we shouldn't be mandating what a district has to offer for benefits. While it's a good thing and those types of things, I tend to agree with that.
Okay, thanks.
So, all that, but, but yeah, you can either look at it, or mn, m-n-m-s-b-a.org is the website to go look at it.
Alright, thanks.
Alright. Anything else, Jeremy, from your report?
I was done.
Committee reports, ECFE?
ECFE met last Monday, just to give updates beginning of the year where we are. All of our classes are full, and then we spent some time talking about the new building and showing what it's going to look like. And then we spent some time talking about how to raise money to fund a playground. Because that's not in, that's not in the budget, so they're raising some ideas on how we can raise money to put a playground together for that.
Is that, the intended area for that would be kind of that area that's between the-
I don't think ICS has really dictated the exact area or the size. They had a couple options, but they haven't actually finalized where it should be. We would like it close in proximity to, I mean, the primary playground, just so they both be used when they're open. But I'm not sure there's really an exact spot.
You said all the classes are full. Is there a waiting list for people?
There's a waiting list, yep, for all, we, yeah. That's a yearly thing, and we've expanded, we've expanded our offerings. You know, originally, we were just one days, and then went to two days, then we went to some three days, some two days, then we went to a four day, and now I think there's a five day. But our early, our school readiness, I think, is full at seventy-five, I think, is what she said they had. But, yeah, they have a waiting list.
How big is the waiting list?
That I don't know.
Is it ten or is it fifty?
I, I don't know. There's no, as long as I've been a-
I think I have this.
As long as I've been a part of it.
There's always been a waiting list.
Our ECFE program is phenomenal here. We always have a waiting list to get into it.
Any other questions from anybody? Alright, Finance Committee?
Might get to give you an update since Ryan's gone. We held our meeting on Wednesday, and we went through our, it's still unaudited, but the audit's done, so pretty much know this is where it's going to end up. The auditor will actually present next month, and you'll approve the audit next month. So, towards the general fund, we, we had a budgeted, the unreserved fund balance, which is, you know, that eight percent where we always want to be. We were projecting to be at two hundred and four thousand, and we actually ended up at four hundred and seventy-five thousand positive increase. So, two hundred and seventy-five thousand better than what we had budgeted, which is pretty close. It's under one percent. The food service fund actually went up seven hundred and thirty-one thousand. That's mainly because of all the federal money, all the meals were paid for, what we served. Nobody had meals paid, that they had to pay for last year. Then we also talked about the community service fund. They did go down, and so we'll need to sit down with the community head people to look at next year's fees, just to make sure that they're aware, because when their building comes in, then we'll have some added costs of custodial heating. You know, when they're in their own building, those costs will be specifically for that program. Then, the building construction fund just showed what we received in the proceeds, what we spent out in actual expenses through June thirtieth. And that service fund was pretty much a wash, a thousand dollars. That's what we went through.
So, the unreserved fund balance, positive deviation leaves us at what percent?
The percentage is eleven percent.
Eleven percent. And the reason for the positive deviation again was?
Just probably mostly conservative budgeting, my part. We were less than one percent away in total. You can get within one percent, pretty close.
I'd say that's pretty good budgeting.
Yeah, and I'd rather be on the positive side than the negative side.
The auditors will have more.
Yeah, they'll have more.
They'll have more details.
I mean, most of the things is probably more like, we didn't spend all the subs. We did subs differently from what our budget were. We had, still had some of the S R monies that we were able to use that we didn't have to spend out of our general fund, so the federal grants paid for expenditures that we didn't have to spend out of the general fund. I mean, those are your major things.
So, our goal is eight percent, about eleven percent on that fund?
Yep.
Is there any positive or negative ramifications to being over that eight percent?
Gives us more reserve. The bonding agencies like to see probably twenty percent.
Oh, okay.
The state, and you'll see it next month, the state average for not this year's ending, June thirtieth, twenty-one, a year ago, statewide average, they have those numbers now. They don't have them for this fiscal year, June thirtieth, twenty-two, but last year's went up, what was it, three percent, went from twenty percent. Now, this is statewide average. So, some districts are above the twenty-three percent, some are, you know, we're below the twenty-three percent. But the average for the state went from twenty the year before, ending twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one, it went up three percent from twenty to twenty-three.
Is there still time for that to fluctuate?
Not, not for that, twenty-twenty-one. So, now, next year, the state will have all of the data from all the districts for June thirtieth, twenty-two. So, we'll see twenty-twenty-two's statewide average next year when we do the audit. But, I mean, there, I would say it's probably going to go up to twenty-six, twenty-seven percent statewide, when we're at about eleven. So, we're not, you know, we're not one of those that's above. We're one of them that's still below the state average.
So, I mean, keep in mind, from a financial perspective, eight percent is less than a month's worth of expenses in reserve.
That's what they have at that, is basically.
Yeah.
You gotta have at least that, or test the goal.
That was our goal for ten years, twelve years.
The last time the district, we looked it up, that you-
Two thousand and eleven.
That Becker was there, or she was, yeah, two thousand and ten or two thousand and one.
When we came on board.
Eight percent.
Actually, the year before we came on board, technically. Alright. One of the questions that comes up on the food fund, lunch fund, whatever you want to call it. In past years, we've had a lot of people kind of fall behind in paying their balances. Are, do we have any idea on?
Where are they at this year? We're at about six thousand bad debts, in bad debts. We did turn in last year to the collection agency, it was about eight thousand. So, we're at about six, and it's pretty much the same family that we turned in the collections last year are still in unpaid status this year.
And I know in the past years, the Lions and others have given money towards that debt retirement. But, so there are some, still some-
Both Becker Lions and Clear Lake Lions have both contributed to that help, so. And a lot of times, what, where that, those donations go to. So, it wasn't during COVID, but now for this year, so a family could convene at lunch and buying the lunches, and they haven't filled out their free and reduced application yet. So, the federal government doesn't allow them to go on to federal, or to the free and reduced until that application is actually approved. But if they don't fill it out until now, the last two months is still at the paid status, which they may not have paid or anything on it. So, a lot of times, where we first of all go with those donations are to the families that have those built-up balances, but they are free and reduced now. So, we wipe those out, because if we could have gotten to fill out the application right away, they would have been free, you know.
And it is a reminder that there are people that are eligible for free and reduced lunch, and it, they actually have to fill out the application. We can't just give it to them.
They did make it easier this year, or not easier for some of the families. The state did a change, and what they call it is it's a direct certification. So, they have some of the information on the families already. And so, they, they gave that information to the districts, and the districts could just upload those automatically. So, those families didn't have to now go back in and fill out a new free and reduced application. And which did help. It caught a lot more people. We, before COVID, we were at eighteen point five percent free and reduced in our district. During COVID, it went down to fourteen percent, because people just didn't have to fill it out. They got the free meal without filling it out, everybody did. But then, when we did the direct certification, it went up to twenty-three and a half percent this year now. So, we did capture a lot more people that probably weren't filling it out before.
And there's a couple reasons. One, obviously, to help out the families. But, two, there's a bunch of the school funding formula that comes off of that.
Right, it's not just the food service part. There's title grants that use that number, compensatory funding that also uses that free and reduced number.
Any other committees? Anything else, any other questions? Alright, moving on to the consent agenda items. Entertaining a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Been moved, been looking for a second?
I'll second.
Moved, seconded for the consent agenda items. Any items desired to be for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And entertaining a motion to accept the November gifts?
All motion.
Been moved, looking for, seconded? Discussion?
I would just like to say thank you. Big money in there again, month after month.
And the robotics team has to raise a lot of money for their whole organization. So, Clear Lake Lions, these training foundations, all that kind of stuff, as well as the dance team, I know, has to raise a lot of money to get for their costumes, uniforms, whatever you want to talk, call them, to get that and other things. So, obviously, thank you to those, those groups. Alright? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are at canvassing the election results. We are in a bit of a pickle on canvassing the election results. While the unofficial results are available, and I think it's pretty uncontested of who got elected, we haven't received the official results from the county. The county is supposed to provide those to the canvassing board for us to canvas the official results. So, technically, we can't canvas any official results until we receive them. Looking through statute and trying to figure out what to do with this, it's not clear that we can't complete the canvas using the unofficial results. And then, when the county does their canvassing on Wednesday, they would note any discrepancies and notify us. Otherwise, we will, we will have to have another special meeting to simply canvas those results.
By the eighteenth, Wednesday or Thursday.
Because it has to be with the-
Three to ten days.
Three to ten days after the election.
So, can't we just do it with the unofficial results? Sounds like, it can't be anything that says we can't.
That is correct. It's, it's up to the canvassing board, which is the school board, to determine if these results are official or not.
Do we have anybody here that would object?
I will move that we take the unofficial results from the Secretary of State's website as posted in our board book as our canvassed results.
I will second that.
And obviously, I mean, any other discussions? So, the way this works statutorily anyway, is that there are fourteen days for anybody to file, you know, a, a contest, a challenge. And then, we would have to come back and review that again. So, I mean, we're still covered statutorily. If there were, if we were to find a problem, that they could, we'd come back and do it. Any one of us can, can challenge the results and make it, you know, so that we would have to redo it. So, I, I feel comfortable moving forward with this.
And then, after the county does do the official canvas, any discrepancies, they do have to know, and we can discuss that at the next meeting?
Yeah. Well, we'd probably call a special meeting at that, at that point.
Yeah, I would, I'll do some more research if that's the case on Thursday, I guess. It'd be an emergency meeting, I guess, is what the title of it would be on Friday here, if you couldn't give notice.
Right.
Is there anything that we need to discuss about-
Is there anything that we need to discuss about, uh, special, you know, the, the special soon, the special election, how that's going to work? And I.
Yeah, um, so, so canvassing takes place tonight. Uh, then there's the, uh, fourteen day recount period, if somebody requests a recount or an appeal.
Yep.
Um, and then.
We issue an election certificate.
Yep, and then within thirty days after that, um, the two people who won the special election, Troy and Ryan Hubbard, can take their spot, um, as a two-year position. Uh, and then the three-year people, uh, Aaron, Corey Stanger, and Pete would begin in January. Aaron would stay on, because he's already on through January. So Pete would be the one that would be affected.
Right.
Uh, however, I talked to Ryan Hubbard last, well, Wednesday last week. Uh, he's not going to be here in December, and he would, he would just like to say the board could, uh, stay full during that time, so, since he's not going to be here anymore, so.
Okay.
It shouldn't create any issues unless Ryan changes his mind, says, hey, I really do want to start in December. Um, that's up to him. He would have to do that, uh, certificate of acceptance in his oath, official oath.
Prior to that meeting?
Yeah, prior to that meeting. So as soon as he does that, he becomes.
As soon as he does it, as soon as he takes the oath, right. Um, there's a piece on bonding, but that's kind of an automatic thing that happens behind the scenes. But there's three things that have to happen. Certificate of election, uh, the bonding, and take the oath. Until that point, you guys are seated in those previously vacant seats, and he, that, that seat doesn't become that person's until those three things happen.
Gotcha, which is typically done at the school, the schedule school board meeting.
Typically done.
Yeah.
But knowing that he's not going to be in town, he's got a planned vacation and that kind of stuff, he didn't want to leave short a person, so, and I did talk to him as well.
As soon as I can.
Yep. Well, um, since it was a special election or whatever, and obviously, um, went through and took the oath and bonded everything when it was appointed, is there anything I need to do? Because now it's an election, is there any other paperwork they have to do, or like that? You'll do the same thing. Same thing, okay.
You have to get the election certificate, even though you've done the oath and, and that kind of stuff. But you get the election certificate is, is the big thing for you. That paperwork has to be.
In December, we, we can decide that, when we plan for the next meeting, but if we want to do a ceremonial oath. There's an official oath that you have to do with a notary.
Yep.
With, uh, just like you did a few months ago. Yeah, so, uh, then we can decide if we want to do a ceremonial one, but you'll be the only one in that ceremonial one, and then January would be you two and Corey, if that's what we do, so.
Along with Ryan.
Ryan probably, uh.
Oh, yeah, Ryan.
Yeah.
Okay, is that cleared, everybody? Yeah. Congratulations to the people who were elected, so, uh, we've had, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Um, we have a first reading of policy seven twenty-two.
And the, the attached reading is, uh, the MSBA, um, policy, model policy, uh, which is different than the current seven twenty-two policy that we have in place. Um, we had this a couple of months ago, uh, it was tabled. We, I had asked for rescind, rescind, rescission.
Rescission?
Rescission.
One of the current policy rescinded.
Yes, uh, and then to adopt this one, and it was tabled at that time. I'm, I'm bringing that back here for, for discussion, or we can, uh, have the first reading tonight, and then have the policy committee meeting possibly, and then discuss what we want to change, add, or not.
So, again, by procedures for policies, we have a first reading to introduce a change of a policy. That's what this is doing, is it introduces the change of policy. Um, we are able to receive public and board comment. They would go back to the policy committee, um, for review, um, along with the superintendent looking at it, and then make a recommendation back to the board for a second reading and adoption. Okay, so typically, if there's a second reading with no changes from the first reading, that second reading and adoption happens at the same time. If there are changes, that second reading would then be, be that reading of all, all the changes, and the adoption would happen at the next board meeting after that.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do have a policy seven twenty-two.
That's correct.
That we voted in.
Yep.
This is on here because you're recommending that we rescind that one.
The change, okay, so we can't, we can't, we could rescind a policy, but that's not the intention here. The intention would be to replace the current seven twenty-two, change it to be this seven twenty-two.
Okay.
It would be an, an amendment, basically.
In effect, the same thing, basically, just to replace it.
Yeah.
But through the policy committee meeting, we could decide that we maybe want to update what we have, or it's going to be talked about at the meeting.
Yeah, it could be a hybrid of the two.
Okay.
You know, any, anything could happen between now and then.
Got it.
And that's, again, up to the policy committee, and the recommendations come before the board. Keep in mind, we can change it at the second reading, right? We don't have to adopt it. We can say, no, I have changes, and we can make and move, move those changes.
Okay.
Doesn't take, uh, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to go to the policy committee. Any one of us can bring it as well. Okay? I would hope that it would go through our committee process and that kind of stuff. Again, all committee meetings are public meetings.
Yep.
Okay, and meant to be that for the, the public to provide that input. Okay, we're done with the first reading, there is no motion or action necessary on that. Uh, all right, any other questions? Communications plan?
Yeah, the communications plan was tabled last month, and I've made a few changes to that since then. Um, I've removed, uh, the belief statements and the supporting statements, um, based on some feedback, and then, uh, also created a model signature, uh, email signature section in there. So there's a model email signature and the version that's in front of you here. Uh, and then there were a couple of other, uh, grammatical errors and things like that that are, that are nonsubstantive. Um, so those, those are the changes that were from the last, um, version that was tabled last month.
Other discussion, questions? And I'll, I'll say the same thing that I said when we adopted this the first time around. This is now really a revised communication plan. And this plan belongs to the administration so that you're able to effectively communicate, um, that we look professional. Um, and, like any plan, it's not set in stone. If there are problems with it, those problems should be brought to the administration to say, hey, I see some problems with this, can we make some adjustments and clarifications? Um, by us basically endorsing this, we're saying, this is a, because this was a superintendent goal for, to establish the communications plan, we're endorsing that the superintendent is working to meet his goal. Okay, this is not a policy of the district, it is a communication plan that's owned by the superintendent and a, and a goal that we had for him to establish. Okay? Just, I'm going to, again, bring all of the background to make sure that everybody understands what we're doing.
And it all started with page eight, logo.
Yeah.
Does that mean, um, as your explanation there, uh, that if somebody brings up issues or concerns of plan, and it was modified, would the board be notified of those modifications? Or because this is really a superintendent document, is that not the way it would work?
Uh, I would hope, you know, we need to.
Yeah, I think if, if it's a major change, I would bring it back to the board. Um, if it's something minor that doesn't really affect anything, um, then, then I think we would just make that change. Just like what we do for, uh, handbooks, um, well, handbooks, like student handbook, staff handbook, uh, activities handbooks, we do the same thing for them. And that's probably one of those we'll get put in rotation, is with those in, in the summertime, which is typically July when we do those. Um, so it'd be similar to that.
So, looking at page eight, the logo, and, and, so are those the only acceptable items to be used for like youth programs and things like that, that come through the board? Is those four options, right?
Yes.
The light, the blue, the dog, and the four dogs?
And we'll take steps on that to create more canality in that, where we can restrict that more. Uh, we still can't, we can't stop printers from printing whatever they want to print. But, um, as far as school-sponsored communications, school-sponsored clothing, um, and things like that, that would, these would be for.
I mean, I'll just say, I mean, statutorily, the board controls all of the activities that are associated with the school. Okay, whether or not they're done by the boosters is immaterial, we still have control over that. That's what we're exercising here, again, to establish some uniformity, professionalism, consistent look. And I'll just tell you, I mean, any organizations do this, right? And they do it so that nobody else is copying it, so we have some sort of a copyright that we have a look.
Branded.
It's branded.
Branded.
Yeah.
Um, one question about that, though. I didn't realize that this board actually had domain of control somewhat over the youth sports and the youth boards. Is there any plan to communicate this directly to them? Because I've been on those boards and never really received a lot of direct communication from this board.
Let me, let me be clear, it has to be associated with the school district. So things that are associated with the city are not our purview. Okay, but if it's associated with the school district and our activities, three act play, I mean, all of those types of things, including the sports.
Yeah, I mean, I'm specifically thinking of Becker Youth Wrestling. I mean, it's directly associated with the school. It's on five oh one C three. It wasn't when I was there, it may have changed.
That's why there's some nuances there to watch out for.
That's a newer trend, I don't know how new I guess it is, but a trend that's been taking place with these associations, instead of having the booster club and all the activities and things underneath that one umbrella, all these ones have branched out, and they're really hard to regulate.
Okay.
When they create their own five oh one C three, and they've got their own accounting measures and, and things that they're supposed to be doing.
And the Becker Youth Sports used to be its own organization.
Becker Youth Sports was, but then like, a lot of the individual sports weren't associated with Becker Youth Sports officially. And, and I don't know, all that's fine and good, I was just wondering if there's going to be any way, any effort to communicate to them to say, hey, we'd like you to use these. Yes, and I. Because it'll probably all comply. I'm doing that with local, and I've, I've done some of that already with local, uh, like t-shirt makers and, and businesses as well, so.
Well, they probably want it. A lot of it, a lot of it has to do with making sure you have the right logo, and, you know, it was always hard to get that, you know, those digital files.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Yeah, and the youth sports, they, they want to be, look just like the high school, you know, they want that, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, when we started this, I think it's right when I started, uh, it was about page eight, and we have, I don't remember, forty-something different bulldogs or something like that around.
Every organization has a different.
Oh, yeah. So, I know when we did ours years and years ago, I just went on the internet and looked closer, and said, okay, we'll use this.
We're good.
So, yeah.
But, yeah, we, I mean, I think we can provide that artwork to all of the, you know.
I'm sure the groups would be appreciative.
And the color palette and all of that. So, and it, and it should translate to, you know, again, the group, as the group grows larger, that consistency, it should bring prices down for them individually as well, one more thing. Because it's, it looks the same, yeah, you just look like this.
Right.
You know, one says basketball, one says football.
Cut down on those design expenses.
Yeah. All right, any other questions?
Do we need a motion to approve?
Yes, we do.
All motion to approve.
Okay.
Some quick questions to clarify. So would then that be the only design?
Hold that just for a second, I need to get a second, and then we can talk about it.
I'll second.
Okay. One second.
Just to clarify, for that, for like designs and everything, it would have to be only that can specific sports do other designs within different things?
It would be these.
Okay.
They are to use these designs, you know, and.
If they're affiliated with the district.
With, yeah, I mean, again, the super, this is superintendent's plan. And so if there's some sort of a special exception, he would be the one that can administer that. Um, so I think any exceptions would have to go through some sort of a process to, to do that. And so I, I'm a never say never kind of person, because something's going to come up where that logo doesn't meet the requirement of Minnesota Dance Association, something like that. And so those types of things, there might be some exceptions that would have to be handled by the superintendent.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
But we want these, so like if it was a speech, t-shirt, and it says Becker Speech, with bulldog's mouth is open because they're talking, that would not be allowed.
Yeah, understandable.
Other questions?
I'm good.
No, thanks for that. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we adjourn.